No, no. A student student.
Okay, I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah. I've been working with Chris on some of the stuff for the high school that I wanted to do. Like the lights.
Yeah.
I don't know, they didn't do this out there. But I want to buy it.
All the same as it was. Yep, yep.
I want to.
It looks all the same as it was. Yep, yep.
I want to. So my head is just.
We've got your.
Yes, it was.
It is. Yeah.
I mean, I got guys talking to every school person on the way here. I know. And I was reading it. I wish it had this. And then both the dogs decided to be around the house. Yeah, I know, not really. Nice job.
Can you pick it up?
Everybody, welcome to tonight's meeting of the Board of Education. So we're honored to see so many people coming out for the meeting to support our community and our students. Board President, Mrs. Sherry Luck is not here tonight, she had a previous commitment. So I will be your gracious host this evening, by the presence of your body if you're here. We made it, I mean, you're my first running of a board meeting in February without any major mishaps, so we'll see if we can make it two in a row. If you plan to make a public comment, please complete a card and give it to our recording secretary, Mrs. Keller, at this time, if you haven't already done so. And at this time, I would ask that you please silence your cell phones, remove your hats, and stand for a moment of wait.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll go ahead and take a little call, Mrs. Keller.
Kate.
President.
Hanson, President. Montague.
President.
Murphy.
President.
Odell. President. Ramber. President. And.
And again, Miss Luck does have excuse absence as she is not here. Fellow board members, you do have an agenda in front of you, so I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Check down the. Four.
The motion had been moved and seconded, and we'll move to vote. All those in favor. Okay. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we will want to get board reports, starting with our student board representative. We have Miss Story and Miss Clark here. Take it away, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
I also hope you checked the lights for this class.
Okay, Riley, how? Um, okay, so I hope everyone's doing good. Um, to start with the high school, so all state testing started this week, so freshman Monday, um, we took their P A C T, softball Tuesday, and then today the video started, um, and they will be testing through Friday. Um, those are handy that from is April twenty-sixth, and she'll kind of get her tickets. Um, April twenty-ninth is the academic award ceremony, so and they will be announcing college or whatever there. Um, we will all seniors there no matter what, even if it's just like obviously to know about everything and even if just to support the classmates. And then we are currently figuring out surveys for students, just here's the Selsky, Ellen, and I, we all had met on Monday, and we talked about about a lot. Um, I'm actually currently, we are working with Fenton students, and they are helping us kind of come up with stuff and figure out the form. And then, um, and yes, we're just starting.
Currently, prom tickets are being sold at both lunches for sixty-five dollars. They can also be purchased at any time in L A A room. Next Monday is the absolute last day to purchase a ticket. If students have a guest pass, they need to make sure it is filled out and signed when they purchase the tickets. And any questions can be addressed by Mr. Davis's blanket in L A room.
Okay, for the middle school, next Wednesday, the eighth graders are doing their P S P S A T. They've been doing their blue book sessions, like, um, practice testing, um, and then they have one final one tomorrow, and then the N W A is starting this week there. The M step starts April twenty-eighth, and then that will go through the middle of May. And, uh, spring force have started, so softball, baseball, and track. And then, um, there also might be possible, um, National Honor Society opportunities there that will, I've not talked about more, I know the track students on the high school team love to help out with those. Um, so they are starting to finalize the end of the year field trip, so for eighth graders, either twenty for seventh graders, the Lansing Longmont game, and then for sixth graders, Roller Haven, and again, more information coming out on those. And then for the wellness event that I had talked about, that was, um, I believe that was the Friday before, um, spring break. It went very well with the yoga, the mindfulness, they had even some physical activities, and they kind of, the men and guest speaker, and they would go run in stations, and they were able to talk to the guest speaker at least once or hearing. And then, um, with the crime turnip hits, like, the crazy hair day, um, kind of assembly, um, it went very well. I actually taught, uh, Riley Luck, actually, she gave me some information on some about it, and asked her friends for me, so. Um, some comments that they said was that the crazy hair show showed us to be whoever we want to be and not to nod just others for who they are. Uh, they said it was very inspiring, it was really funny and entertaining, and they were totally recommended to other students. And, um, one of the girls said it made them feel like they could be more brave. Um, so overall, it was really good in that they still love it. And then, um, oh yeah, just again, another super entertaining and really fun.
Uh, to wrap up March's reading month at Central, they hosted a parent engagement event. Around sixty families attended the event with a total of about two hundred people. They experienced learning activities together as a family. Also, like many of the buildings, construction is well underway, and as the board spoke about last meeting, this past week or so, the cafeteria and a few surrounding areas or spaces were abated with asbestos. Uh, N W A testing is happening this week as well, which wraps up local testing for the year. Fourth and fifth graders are hard at work in music class and preparing for the spring concerts. The fourth grade concert will be held on April twenty-third, and fifth graders on April twenty-fourth, on Fugue at the Ice Club.
Um, for Linden L, uh, they are entering the N W A assessment window. Uh, the young fires in kindergarten, Forum, or Nature Preserve, the staff are coming in for an in-house presentation on the animals, and they have that on April tenth. Um, the first grade field trip to Longway Penitarium is on April fifteenth, and then the Scholastic Book Fair is April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. And then, um, again, update on the March of Reading Month, they gave away six fights, um, and as well as many other prizes, uh, that came from Linden, um, Mason's Group, and the winners were Lady. Onyx, I don't, I don't, what is it? Onyx, Onyx, okay. Um, Quinn, Parker, Maggie, and Aiden.
Uh, Hyatt members of the Linden City Council visited the second grade class this week as part of the kickoff for this year's Back City Project. The students' finished project will be open to the public on April twenty-ninth. Spring assessments are starting soon there as well, and Hyatt is also ramping up preparations for their fall projects. The Pals Flower Fundraiser helped raise nearly four thousand dollars to support future field trips in Central.
Okay, for Argentina Elementary, the Play Together, Learn Together, Parent-Child, um, exploration class every Tuesday and Thursday. There's the Stunnite April eleventh, and then April thirtieth, they are having their Jane Burry. And then, as always, we're always, sorry, always looking for service opportunities for National Honor Society, and that wraps it up, guys.
Okay, thanks, Miss Story and Miss Clark, we really appreciate it. It's just dizzying how much it, how much is going on at the school, so thank you for keeping us up today. Everyone came back from spring break, and it's just, uh, guns blazing. So appreciate it. Uh, and now we will move on to our superintendent report, Mr. Selsky.
Thank you, Mr. Montague, and welcome everybody this evening. I do have a couple things to report out on. Uh, first of all, state testing began this weekend in Linden High School. Ninth grade P S A T was given on Monday, tenth grade P S A T on Tuesday. Eleventh grade students took the S A T with essay today, and will continue with the A C T work keys on Thursday, uh, finishing up on Friday with the M step, like with the social studies and science. Uh, the L C S testing window for M step grades three through eight will begin on April twenty-second. Um, I was joined by S R O Officer Williams and S R O Paniper, uh, at yesterday's Emergency Operations Planner Review Committee meeting. We joined other county districts as well as county law enforcement to continue the review process of the current E O P, uh, that is in place here at Linden Community Schools as well as throughout the county. Uh, the Earn Sick Time Act, uh, March twenty-fifth, we sent out guidance called district staff on public two, Public Act Two of twenty-twenty-five, the Earn Sick Time Act. District provided front loaded or cruel based sick time has been evaluated and is in compliance with E S T A guidelines for all employees. We did have employees interventionist and recess aids who did receive additional sick time to put them in compliance with the E S T A. Uh, and then just a quick update, I know the, uh, our young ladies hit on it, uh, I know Mr. Vanez, uh, informed the board, uh, at our last board meeting, some of the bond work that took place over spring break. But the abatement work, uh, that was scheduled over break was all taken care of, this included the flooring and mastic removal in classrooms at Hyatt, along with two mechanical rooms having the asbestos pipe wrap removed. At Central, we invaded the flooring and mastic in the cafeteria and associated store rooms, along with classrooms. Uh, in addition, twenty asbestos pipe wrapped fittings in, in room eighteen, which will be the new office location. As far as construction, actual construction, we did begin some work over break. At Hyatt Elementary, the new main office build out began. Temporary fire barriers were constructed, mechanical and electrical, uh, were demoed, new interior walls were built, new windows and door openings were created through the basery walls. And concrete floors were cut open and removed to allow for new plumbing. Classroom door frames were modified to accept the new doors and hardware that will be coming this summer. Also, fire alarm cable and devices were ran and installed in various locations to help with the process. At Central Elementary, the new main office build out also began. Again, mechanical, uh, was demoed, and, and electrical areas were demoed, interior corridor windows and doors were created, and new basery. New doors, windows, uh, were too thin and fire protected. We also had some exterior, exterior window openings that were created. Interior basery walls were demoed, and some new ones built. Concrete floors again were cut open to allow for some new plumbing. Uh, and again, a huge thank you to our construction crews who did a lot of work over the break, uh, to get this amount of work taken care of in a short period of time. And an extra huge thank you to our custodial staff, uh, they worked extremely hard to get the construction mess cleaned up, uh, to make sure Hyatt and Central were ready to go when we returned to school on Monday. That's all, yeah?
Yeah, well said. Thanks, Mrs. Selsky. Thank you, everyone, to, uh, that work that you guys did over spring break, we really appreciate it. And, uh, now we will move on to board member reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Okay, Miss Ramber?
Uh, I was gonna say something that you're probably gonna say, but I was just gonna report that I attended the G I S B meeting with Mr. Montague, uh, for the first time, and it was really helpful to see, um, all the board members from all the other districts in Genesee County. So that was really nice. Um, I did make a request, you know, it was my first time, to see maybe if we could get a printout of the meeting minutes, or even have like a, a link to watch it so that every board member wanted to see it but couldn't attend it. I thought that would be awesome that we could at least zoom in and watch it if we can't physically make it, but I thought it was great.
Yeah, thanks, anybody else. Yeah, and, uh, Ms. Hanson also attended that Genesee County Associated Schoolwork Members Meeting, and I believe they said it was record-setting attendance mainly because it's a, it's a group where board members from all of the different schools in Genesee County get together. And I think this was one of the first times when they made a intentionally invited a lot of new board members, so we had a lot of those attend, and just a lot of good sharing of information, and everyone kind of recommitted to trying to share best practices throughout the year in terms of what different districts are doing throughout Genesee County, so that's a good meeting to be part of. And now, in the absence of President Luck, I'd be remiss if I didn't express something that she always says when we begin this part of the meeting, uh, and that we are now here at the best part of any board meeting, and cannot disagree with her as we have our student recognitions. So I'll just go with the order that I see on the list here. I believe that we're gonna start with Linden Elementary. And Mrs. Griffin.
Good evening. Tonight, we will be recognizing one of our students who was chosen by our specialty teachers, Mrs. Fray, Miss Martin, and Mrs. Bush.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Fray, I teach art. Mrs. Bush has, um, seven, and Mrs. Martin teaches music. Our special team at Linden L, um, got together, and we are very excited to honor Graham Campbell tonight. He is our student of the month. Um, when we asked, um, other staff members who they, uh, excelled, um, Graham came, Graham's name came up over and over and over again. So Graham, you should be very proud of yourself, because not only you had one teacher, there's four teachers that picked you to have a mission tonight. Um, Graham's infectious smile, I'm not getting the whole. And positive attitude lights up every room he enters, making everyone around him feel happier and more motivated. His enthusiasm for learning is truly inspiring, and he always gives his best effort in everything he does, demonstrating that patience and his strong perseverance. Graham consistently shows kindness, patience, well beyond his peers, setting a wonderful example for our peers. His presence in class is a joy, and we are so grateful to have him. We are blessed, and it's a privilege to celebrate his achievements tonight. Good job, Graham.
Congratulations, Graham, that is awesome. That happened, and we see three teachers get up to show appreciation, so congratulations, that's awesome. And I believe that we're moving on to two others with our same group of teachers, correct?
Yes, Hyatt. Hyatt.
Yep, for Hyatt.
Good evening, this is a special honor tonight because we're gonna recognize two wonderful students, and I wanna recognize also, as you said, this is pretty impressive, you have four staff members show up, uh, to do something like this, and I think it speaks highly to our teachers, especially to our specialty teachers, to really work together, and when we put this out, they want to find us, and they're all on board. And so it's a big honor, honor Maggie, and honor Thomas tonight, and I'm gonna step away so they don't talk about you guys.
Sweet Thomas, so yeah. Thomas has been one of my students.
Sawa.
Sawa? This is Fray's first name, Sawa. We are super proud to recognize Thomas as our third grade student of the month. Thomas has consistently demonstrated qualities that set him apart. He is caring, he's very patient, he's so hardworking, and he's always dedicated to being the best that he can be. Thomas has built strong friendships, and he's always so helpful to all those around him. His positive attitude and eagerness to learn make him a joy to have in all our classes. We talked to Miss Nicole, and she says that you excel in all subjects and ask awfully broken questions, and is a wonderful young man. We all believe that Thomas will continue to thrive at Linden Schools, and his future is incredibly bright. Congratulations, Thomas, for all the secret ideas.
Congratulations, Thomas, thank you.
Congratulations. Hi, I'm Mrs. Brooks, I teach art at Hyatt, and, um, amongst myself, and Mrs. Doctor, the gym teacher, and Miss Jordan, the music teacher, we would like to recognize our second grader, Maggie Madra, because she stood out above anybody else in our classes for this month. Um, she demonstrates kindness, courtesy, and respect in all of her specials and in her regular class. Um, she is a role model who not only follows our sore expectations, but she also encourages all of her peers to do so. Um, I'm so proud of her. Every time she comes in the class, she's not willing to, not only willing to do the work herself, but she's always looking for a friend or anyone else in class that needs help. She's a dedicated peer buddy for Mrs. Getchelay's class, and she goes above and beyond to support classmates with patience, patience and compassion. Her positive attitude and commitment to always doing her best make her a joy to have in our classes, so congratulations, Maggie.
Great job, Maggie. Great to have big helpers in the classroom. I know your teachers appreciate it, thank you. Okay. Thank you, teacher, we appreciate it, nice job. Thanks for coming out. And now we're gonna move on to Central, I know Terry with Mrs. Morford.
Good evening. I am Mrs. Edwards here, one of our fifth grade teachers that would like to share some very important work about Brock, who is one of our fabulous fifth grade students that we would like to recognize as student of the month at Central.
As Mrs. Morford said, I am Mrs. Edwards, I am Brock's homeroom teacher, um, both, uh, both myself and Mrs. Barber, who is on maternity leave, um, chose Brock for our next April Student of the Month. I am proud to recognize Brock as student of the month. Brock consistently demonstrates kindness and respect towards his classmates and his teachers. He always acts with integrity, ensuring that he follows school rules and helps others when needed. Brock actively contributes thoughtful insights during our discussions, enriching the classroom experience for everyone. Something that stood out to me was at the very beginning of the year, um, the students had to present if they wanted to be part of the student council, and Brock spoke at the front of everybody, and he said, um, he gave a wonderful speech, but what stood out to me was, last year, I really wanted to do this, and I was so nervous. But look at me now, I am up here, and I am running for student council. That stood out to me as incredibly brave and mature and thoroughly impressed me. Um, so, his dedication to his studies, his willingness to assist others, and consistently demonstrate positivity, and his willingness to put himself out there and go out of his comfort, comfort zone makes him a role model for all of us. We are lucky to have Brock in our class.
Congratulations, Brock. Yeah, you'll find the more that you put yourself out there, the more comfortable you get doing it, so keep it up. And now we're gonna move on to, uh, Linden Middle School. And Mr. Andrews.
Thank you for the opportunity to present our student of the month. Linden Middle School, before I do that, congratulations to all the other representatives, it's a big deal to be up here in, uh, in front of your peers and in front of the board of education, you get an honor for your wonderful achievements and behavior. So with that said, I'd like to invite Linden Middle School's Olivia Green to the podium, and Mr. Durant is going to present on behalf of her.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Durant, and Linden Middle School is thrilled to announce Olivia Green as student of the month. Olivia has consistently demonstrated exceptional qualities that embody our school's sore values. Some academic excellence. So Olivia has received all A's on her first national report card and continues to do excellent work through the third and fourth marking period by maintaining all A's in all of her classes. Some personal qualities about Olivia, she's kind. Olivia is known for her friendly demeanor and willingness to help others. Her determination, she faces challenges with a positive attitude and works hard to overcome obstacles in each one of her classes. She is a role model. Olivia sets an exa-, uh, excellent example for her peers by exhibiting hard work and dedication to her academics. So I asked, um, a few of her teachers to just give me some, uh, insight on Olivia. Um, Mrs. Strong said Olivia always completes her work, uh, in E D P and does an excellent job on all of her assignments. She is a pleasure to have in class. Mr. Bond, which is her math teacher, one of the underappreciated qualities of a student in today's classes is the ability to take criticism and grow from it. Olivia learns in this way far above the level of her peers, always asking questions and seeking to correct mistakes. Mr. Carson, who is her social studies teacher, Olivia always goes above and beyond expectations, she has high standards for herself, and she's highly motivated. When she finishes early, she asks if there's anything else she can do in class to help the teacher. She has a great sense of humor and keeps smiling throughout the day, so true. Uh, I am her science teacher, and Olivia has always been one of my highest achieving students this year. She takes pride in her work and is extremely motivated to do well not only in my class, but in other classes as well. She is well liked by students and is truly a joy to have in class. Olivia Green embodies the spirit of Linden Middle School. Her academic achievements, her leadership skills, and personal qualities make her a deserving recipient of student of the month. Congratulations, Linden.
Great job, you, yeah. You could have stopped at all A's for the entire school year, and then just went on and on and on, so that's awesome, great job. And last but certainly not least, Linden High School, Mr. Dresky.
Before we get going and introduce, uh, L H S's student of the month, congratulations to all the other student of the month winners. Uh, this, uh, April, Linden High School's student of the month is Chloe Gordon, and we have her nominee, our nominator, Mrs. Donnie, who obviously has some wonderful things, another great representation that we have here in Linden High School. So congratulations to Chloe.
Well, I am so excited. Um, I have put her name in so many times. Um, so when she finally got accepted, I was so excited. It is a great pleasure that I present Chloe Gordon as student of the month for April. Um, and I do appreciate the Board of Education for allowing this opportunity, um, to showcase a fabulous student. Um, I've known her for the past three years, and I've seen her grow and change in so many positive ways. She exemplifies the qualities of a dedicated learner. Her hard work, her active participation in class, show of commitment, not only to completing the assignments accurately, but also deeply understanding, um, every concept that is taught in class. Um, she doesn't just aim for the right, for the best grade, she just really wants to understand everything. Um, she, it reinforces her knowledge when she works with struggling learners. Uh, she's both been a construction leader in my class, and she's also been, um, helping students in her other classes, um, in school. Um, this reinforces her knowledge and understanding also. Um, she treats everyone with dignity and respect. Um, Chloe's efforts have rightfully earned her the title of student of the month. She's a wonderful, strong-willed young lady who continues to evolve in so many positive ways. She continues to possess a greater confidence in herself, and as, um, her teacher, I'd love to see that people grow and become more confident. see that people grow and become more confident. She always maintains a future-focused mindset. I often hear, you know, that she wants to become a realtor. I often hear that she talks about her grandma and her family with a lot of respect and I can tell that she is a great deal by her family. And I do appreciate, one of the other greatest things about her is she sets goals and she achieves them through determination. Everyone who knows her, and this came from every teacher, is immensely proud of her progress and eagerly anticipates the great things that her future will hold. Her friendliness towards all fellow students coupled with her beautiful smile every day brightens everyone's day, making her an outstanding student of Lyndon Community Schools.
Congratulations Chloe. I've also had the pleasure of knowing Chloe for a long time. It's been really fun to see her develop and grow into a deserving Student of the Month, so congratulations to Chloe on that. That does conclude the best part of any board meeting. And with that, we will continue on with our business. We're going to pause for a few minutes at this time if you would like to, the families that have come, the teachers that have come. You may get up and take some pictures outside, exit the building if you'd like. You're more than welcome to stay through the entire meeting, but we do have a bit of business to continue with, so yeah, we'll pause for a few minutes. Students, do you have to stay? Thank parents and teachers for coming. It really means a lot. Thank you for your support.
I got the approval. We'll send them later. Thank you again.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue on here. We do not have any administrative updates, so that takes us to public comments. Do we have any public comments, Mrs. Cowan? Okay, we do not. With that, we move on to the consent agenda, which consists of minutes from our last meeting and two forms indicating that our delegate, Mr. Heaney, and alternate Mr. Murphy from the G I S D annual budget hearing. Do we have motion support for the consent agenda? And then moved and seconded. Any discussion there? So all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to action items, and we do have three of them. The first two are around option A and option C for the Argentine property, which are selling structure and property as is and demolishing the structure and selling the property respectfully. I know we had some lengthy discussion about this at our last meeting, but before we get into the motions, Mr. Selsky, Mrs. Selsky would like to flag another. Okay, alright. We will make a motion. Do I have a motion to? Let me go ahead and read it here. There has been an administrative recommendation for the first action item to approve moving forward with the disposition and property slash sale of the Argentine building. Do I have a motion and support? It has been moved and seconded. And do we have any discussion? Would you like to provide any other information, Mr. Selsky?
Sure, just following along with policy seventy-three hundred, the board policy. Giving approval this evening will allow myself and or Greg Kodesz to move forward with the process of securing and potentially either selling the property with the building and/or selling the property with the building being demolished. So in action number one, selling the property with the structure in place, again, this gives us the opportunity to start planning that, that next step. Obviously, any type of offer decision is a board decision. So again, this particular recommendation is to approve moving forward with that planning process. And again, I am asking, and I'll say it again when we get to number two, having both options in place at this time, it does allow for future decisions on the property to take place simultaneously, as well as looking at the best financial option that would benefit the district. And the analogy I can use, we may in due time get an offer to buy the property with the building for a price and at the same time get an offer to buy the property where we demolished the building for a higher price, knowing that we would have to demolish the building. We've got about $250,000 set aside in the bond for that. And moving concurrently with both of these, if that offer is higher with the demolition of the building than the sale with the building, I think again, that's a decision the board will have to make. So again, bringing both of them tonight allows us to move forward down those paths.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other discussion from any board members? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Marni. Mr. Selsky, we talked earlier today about there's some sort of a permit you mentioned last week at the last meeting regarding our ability to utilize Hyatt's new facility for early childcare. He said it could take up eight months to get that, which doesn't leave us enough time before the start of the year if it did take eight months. Do you have any further comment on that?
Yeah, I can comment on that. There is a process that goes into getting that building licensed. I know talking with Ms. Makaravich. Since she's been in place down there, we've been moving pretty fluidly. She's had multiple communications with the case manager, if you will, the individual who you're seeing that process, to make sure that we're checking the boxes and things are in place. Is there potential that licensing does not occur prior to the time that we are planning to move? Any of that is possible. Again, approving these particular action items this evening, we would have no intent of moving out of Hyatt if we weren't licensed. We would have to be licensed, so we would stay at Argentine until that process was completed, the licensing process, if it is not done with our target date toward the end of August. So again, moving forward with these particular action items just puts us in a position to move that process forward, but it doesn't mean that we have to do something prior to August or prior to our intended move date.
And the intended move date was after school was out or is it sometime during summer?
Sometime during summer, we're targeting toward the end of August at this point.
To move? Actually move?
Yes.
Like quickly?
Yes. Yeah, our early childhood programs usually start a little bit later than our middle school.
Okay. Alright, well, like I said, I continue to be concerned about the long-term available space for Lyndon Community Schools regarding not just the early childhood program, which I would hope would grow. It hasn't grown so far and I put that largely on our administrative team, not putting enough effort into that. So assuming that maybe that happens in the future, I think we need to keep available space for at least another year to make sure that the permit goes through and that we, as we develop this year's number of slots that are available for early childcare, that seems to be kind of most likely pigeonholed unfortunately. That's not official yet to what we got last year, which is really not enough to support all the kids in our district who potentially qualify if the government program continues to move on as it's done in the past few years. So I see this as a short-sighted effort to move forward at this time. I don't think that the value of commercial property is very strong right now. This property is commercial, but I think it's commercially grown right now, Mr. Selsky? Is that what we decided?
Yes.
Okay. You know, you've got nine hundred feet on South Water Lake, approximately anywhere from two fifty to one seventy-five feet deep. I think there's a lot of opportunity for somebody to come in there and develop that property and make a ton of money at the expense of not necessarily rewarding us with sale that reflects that. So I would be inclined to, well, I definitely support not moving forward with this, these policies, these decisions, recommendations at this time, given the things that just outlined in the film. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other board comments? Mr. Heaney?
As far as the two different options, A and C, so essentially the approval of our seeking, they work in conjunction with one another. It gives you the opportunity to, so they're not really standalone. It's either or, they work together.
My recommendation is to have them as running concurrently. So we have options.
And the way you described it, the narrative that you provided was that if, if somebody were interested in purchasing but having us incur the cost of demolition, that's really the main purpose for putting an option C.
Yeah, like for example, again, the numbers I'm going to throw out are just hypothetical, but if somebody offered us $500,000 for the property with the building and then somebody offered us $900,000 for the property if we demolished the building. And again, we're anticipating $250,000, that's what we've set aside in the bond. You know, when you do the math, the financial benefit to the district is more to demolish the building and sell the property as is at the current. So that's why, and in planning for that, running to have those options.
With everyone, Mr. Murphy said, can we run, correct me, are we running the risk of not having approval to where we don't have approval for I am marketing Argentine?
I guess I couldn't answer that because I'm not the one doing inspections. We, I have not heard, we have not been, we have always been approved, even at Argentine. Our different inspections that we've had at Hyatt up until this point have always been approved as well. So again, I, without knowing, I couldn't answer that. Again, we're targeting that end of August move date still. We have no reason to believe that we won't get that.
Probably only if Hyatt would do the approval, obviously.
In my opinion.
Regarding the actual expenses of Argentine, I know in the past you give us the figure. What's the fixed monthly cost for students? About $30,000 to let and sit there if we have no program to build. Mike, turn this over to your exer for a minute.
Yeah, our current expenses for utilities is basically right around $30,000. I would anticipate that would reduce, you know, incrementally, but we would continue to maintain the building, keep it, you know, even cool just so we don't develop mold or frozen pipes or any other kind of, you know, issues. So it's going to be probably just slightly under that. Although utility rates are going up, electric gas releases are going to, are going to go up substantially and the cost of electricity is going to be, it's just under three percent increase for the coming year, so.
And that's a annual, the thirty to annual?
Annual, okay, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other board members discussion?
I have a question. So when we get the figures, if we think it's too low or it's not enough because the market goes down or the market goes up, we just, we won't know for a few months how the market's going to react to tariffs and all the things that's going on right now. And the, from what I've gathered, the commercial property value is extremely low for market price because there's so many buildings open. When we get these figures, will the cost of the fact the building has air conditioning be in that, because a lot of schools don't have air conditioning? So you'll, when you get the estimates from the market, are we going to have every breakdown of what is worth and why it's worth it? And then if we do demo it, is there a way to find out, I don't know if Mr. Greg can attest to it, if there is metals in there like copper that we can take before we demo it and, and trade that in based on the precious metal market?
I would say based on my experience when we demoed the building that was downtown years ago, when we put the project up to bid, most of the companies that are bidding on that were taking into account if they're going to be able to recycle as part of that process. I guess it would certainly be more private to say we wanted anything that was of value. But again, there's very little copper in the building, it's built, you know, over a hundred years ago. There is some copper liking this in there, but I would say it's insignificant value overall. But certainly that would be our priority. There's steel in it, there is some copper, I would say it's probably minimal.
Okay, but we could find out exactly how much we think estimate the copper working there. It's going up and it could go even more, especially if there's international deals, it could go a hundred times higher. So it's things like that, actually, I want everything out of the building, like every, every table, everything of asset to come back to the school.
The furnishings that are in the building are all going to move with the program. It'll be basically a skeleton of the building after we move out of there. But again, based on our previous experiences that we had with demolition, the contractors are going to take those things because they recycle those facilities when they take them down. They literally pick apart the pieces and anything that is salvageable or anything that is worthy of being scrapped out, they take that into account when we put the number together. If the board chose to do it in some other hand, we could certainly entertain that.
So that's an option, yes. I just want like certain door handles, they might be a hundred and fifty dollars that you could sell for the door handle. I found that out of my own home when I got a new side of glass door, that the lock itself is a specialty lock and I, because I don't raise a lock because there's certain things that you can pay a lot of, a lot of money for. So I just want every dollar every time I was still thinking if we're going to sell it.
Just real quickly, this could be a moot point because if it remains commercial, obviously in Argentine, there's not really a huge need for commercial property. So is this time limited? Is there a couple point where we pivot from selling to demoing? If it sits for two years on the market, at that point, are we just going to say, alright, let's just demo it?
As I stated before, if we get to that point, work over here some row, the value of the buildings in the district is diminished to the point to where it's not going to be worth us putting the money that we need to open a backup. Once we make it going for 24 months, we can't react to buy the building without creating it up to 2025 code, 2026 code, 2027. Those things have changed even since I spoke to the board a few months ago. A lot of changes to the electrical code requirements in the state. I don't think there would be value in us trying to break that building up to code to reuse it for us if we're out there for 24 months. I think at that point, if there's been no interest in it, I don't know if we want to wait 24 months. I guess if there's zero interest in it, and we hit a year down the road, I guess the board needs to make a decision at some point and we'll come back with a recommendation of what might be best. We really don't know what's out there. The intent would be to see who's interested in it, market it nationally. But again, as someone that comes tonight, commercial property, there's an abundance of it. There's not necessarily an abundance of it in this area, but you know, nationwide, there's an abundance of it. There may be a benchmark, there may be somebody that sees or has a great idea to, you know, revitalize that building and use it for our, who knows? But I mean, you know, the idea's could be endless, but we have no idea what's going to transpire. Only time will tell. And we need to really build the market, you know, with the board's blessing to really see what's going on there.
Any other board members? Oh, sorry, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, so, Mr. Selsky, what is the plan asking the price for this property? About five acres of land on South Water Lake. I don't know. Twenty-seven thousand square foot? Twenty-four. Twenty-four thousand? Twenty-four thousand square foot. Okay, so.
Yeah, so as we presented that in our last meeting, we did do a market analysis with two different companies, American Realtors out of Fenton and Remax out of Lyndon. As we mentioned last meeting, American Realtors had it valued somewhere between the 200 and $400,000 mark and Remax of Lyndon had it valued between the 400 and 500, $500,000 mark, based on again, a quick market analysis comparables.
I guess for that being said, I think Remax feels more comfortable trying to sell it at the fixed value and makes it understand quickly before any time. I think the secondary alter felt that the veteran- Um, I think the second altar felt that the veteran approach may need to market it nationally, uh, try to garner some interest in the property and then potentially take seal bids. Um, so I guess as we, you know, again, any of these weather offers would come back to this board. It's not a decision that would be made outside of this room, so, um, you know, ultimately, it's gonna be your choice and decision whether you accept or reject. But they have different ideas in which they feel it would be best marketed or sold. One felt that they knew the value of it very well. And the other felt that it was a, a need to, to push it out, you know, and see what the market would bear.
So given the space, the cost of us to replace school space would be like a twelve million, fifteen million dollars to replace that school space?
So, about three times the estimate for the addition, I guess. If you were to look at it as a supportive order, maybe a little two point, two, three times that. That was, that had a range from three and a half million to probably five. So, yeah, somewhere in that twelve million dollar range, you would say.
And this board would actually entertain five hundred thousand? Are you kidding me? It's ridiculous. I hope that they have more sense of that. Thank you.
Any other board members? Okay.
And without rehashing everything that I've said at the last couple meetings, I'll just reinforce that. I, I know that the Argentite building does have a lot of emotional connection to a lot of us, and so it came to be an emotional thing. I'm, I'm comfortable seeing the numbers that I've seen, that, uh, you know, not only if we did have a scenario where we had an increase in the number of students, do we have an option to expand over Hyatt? I think that's a really good option to build that new addition instead of put money into an old building. And I like the way that we kind of got this laid out to where we have a lot of different options for either the sale, for what the market dictates, or if we get more money from just the property with the demo, then that would come to the board and then it sounds like, well, we're not gonna completely exit the building until we got the permitting for the early childhood center that's already approved to start it at Hyatt. So, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm comfortable to be in support of, of this motion and the standing. So, I think with that, we will take a vote with the motion on the table. Um, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, with that, that was the motion for the piece to sell the building as is. Uh, now we'll move forward to the second option, which would be to move forward with the selling of the property, including the demolition of the structure. Do I have a motion in support? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this piece of it? Mr. Murphy?
One second, I just wanna reiterate that if we don't feel comfortable with this, we can say, okay, we got the numbers and we don't wanna go along with it. Either option, you can say, no, we don't like it.
Yes, eventually the board will have to make a decision. And then they say, no, don't do it, they don't do it, just with other own.
I was saying, if Truks is wanting to, I wanna make sure that it didn't fall through a different.
No.
So, let me be clear, you're gonna plan on marketing this building for five hundred thousand for ninety-five? Or that's the price you're gonna put out there?
We, we don't know exactly what that price is. Again, as we mentioned, this, this step allows us to move forward with getting into some discussions with some realtors, uh, getting a little more in-depth with the property, the values, and then potentially marketing that out. So I, I couldn't tell you, they may come back and say it's a higher one. Again, this was a market analysis. Um, what they, what most professionals are gonna tell us of, as far as what they expect the price to be or to sell it as, I couldn't answer that at this time.
But what you're saying is that if it's at least four ninety-five that they're coming back to, then you would go ahead and say, okay, we'll market it for four ninety-five? Is that what you're saying?
I'll probably bring it back to the board and say, is this what we wanna market it as?
So you're gonna come back to us before you set the price on?
Well, I think the board needs somebody aware of what that price is gonna be.
Okay, are you gonna market it or not before you ask the board whether this is the best?
We will come back to the board with what the marketing value is, based on what the realtor.
Basically already done, but you're gonna get just a little bit further in depth with some different realtors.
Yeah, we don't have a realtor right now.
But you said you had two, two different.
We have two different market analysis, correct.
And I guess I'm curious, what do you think the other realtors are gonna tell you the market analysis hasn't told you?
I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not a real estate expert.
So you won't come back before you put it out in the rational business or something like that?
Is that what the board would like?
That's what I would like.
Oh, go ahead, you have a comment on that?
I was gonna say, so, so what you did with the analysis was kind of to do a rough estimate, where now you're gonna hire a realtor to kind of walk through the building, take more measurements, and say, this is what it is. So, could you, before you list it, like forward scale, like ready to go live, could you come back and let us know what it is first? Okay, before you listen, we don't wanna get someone's hopes up and then say, oh, sorry, we're pulling off. Would you please say that?
Sure. Yeah, and, and I guess as I see it too, we can kind of walk in a fine line here having these conversations that aren't official because the board hasn't officially approved that we're gonna sell the building. So now this, this kind of gives us some officiality, if you will, to now you can be more comfortable.
We can just move forward with the next step.
Yeah.
Looking at those numbers, securing somebody, having those discussions on a formal basis.
Yeah, I mean, there might even be, you know, some private investors or something that, you know, that hear about it now that it's been official, that wanna come to the table, it's like just, you know, a Remax or whoever it is, but, yeah, okay. All right. Okay.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, so, let me be clear. You're, what you're telling us is that you're going to market this, go out to market this product to create a price. And you're gonna come back to this board with that price before it's officially put on the market for that price.
That's what the board would like, yes, I would more than happy to do that. No problem with that.
Well, it's not kind of written in the motion that way.
No, it's not. Cause you might have.
So we can at least have, start that conversation with a real estate firm versus continuing to talk a lot here at the board level. So just the board giving myself and Mr. Van Ness direction on our next steps. So I think we need to amend the motion to include moving forward with the demolition of property, demolition of structure, or purpose selling property, after the administrative team has identified a selling price.
With, with a real estate company, we would have to bring some type of real estate contract back. So the board's gonna know all those details.
But I, I don't want going back after it's already been offered to somebody. I want it before.
We would come back, like a contract with a real estate company. Oh, I'll give a feedback, sorry. Not, not with a prospective buyer, but if we sign out a real estate company, typically you sign a contract with that company for a certain amount of time to market it and work for us. So that would have to come back to the board. So usually that includes the price, uh, market value, if you will, or the potential cost, uh, any other fees, uh, so on and so forth.
Speaking of that, do you happen to know what the percent will be on a sale of this nature?
No, I do not.
Okay, well, that would be brought back too.
Yes, and so I'll, I'll be in that contract.
Okay, then, then, yes, we do need to have this motion amended to include, um, a definite, I guess, plan where you bring back the contract, all the parameters to that contract, included the recommended selling price for this board for final approval before it's ever put out there.
But I think too, all that has to, Mr. Murphy, based on our, our board policy as well. So window it out, a motion, that'd be a violation. Uh, so that information will come back to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good point. Any other discussion? Okay, I think we are good to vote then. Uh, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a third action item here. This is related to Katie O'Dell continuing her education for board service. She'd like to attend CBA one-on-one, Fundamentals of School Board Service on April twenty-sixth. Administrative recommendation is to approve Katie O'Dell's CBA one-on-one course attendance. Do I have a motion?
The vote.
In support.
Support.
And had the movement seconded? Any discussion?
What's the cost on this one?
Wait, this is the reimbursement?
Reimbursement, well, this one, yeah. This one's fully reimbursed?
Seventy-nine dollars.
Seventy-nine dollars. Very good, thank you. It's a good person, virtual. Cool, very good.
Uh, I had a email from NSAB, and I remember the GISD said something about this. Did, uh, it said to check with the Secretary of the Workshop. So that would be, you'd be applied for the seven hundred and fifty dollar credit. So we got that, because they said only so many schools did, and I was like, geez, we're one of the ones that did.
Oh, and actually, uh, we do have that workshop next week on April sixteenth, and that is worth that seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. I just remember to say that at the GISD, and I was like, oh, that just slipped my mind, I asked.
Yeah, yeah, like Brad, Ben has like the lawyer. Yeah.
We should cancel the weather, admit a weather.
That's right.
Hopefully you don't have to cancel again.
But these hundred dollar reimbursements are outside of the seventy, right? That's the seventy.
Yeah, that's seventy.
A hundred different classes that we can take, or anything less than a hundred. By MMSB.
There is reset of, of courses with seven MMSB study.
All the one hundred.
All of those that, well, there are more than just the one hundred. They're all specified, right? And this is.
Well, I think she'll benefit.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you, Ms. O'Dell, for doing that, we appreciate it. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that gets us through the action items and takes us to a discussion item, which is another one of our favorite meetings of the year, where we get to talk about curriculum review. So I believe Mrs. Thomas is gonna take us through. So Mrs. Thomas, the floor is yours, thank you.
Um, okay, hi, everybody. I just wanna start off by saying thank you so much for this opportunity to come and share what we've been working on our curriculum timeline. We have a six-year curriculum timeline, but we try to make sure that all of our courses are reviewed and refreshed. In addition to that, annually, sometimes multiple times during the course of the year, teachers, course owners have time to look at their courses and refresh and add components, whether it's assessment or looking at standards and prioritizing. So we have a pretty good, uh, woven process, you know, from annually to also on a six-year basis. Primarily, this time of the year, we typically are looking at the courses that are our review, that we're looking for materials, but not always, it just depends on the courses. Okay, so, um, as I'm going through, those who are here to help me, uh, the folks, boots on the ground, our curriculum leaders from CIA, as well as teacher reps for, um, different curriculum are here to talk about it. So if they're here, they'll pop up when their slide comes up, okay? All right, so overall, those are all the courses, and we're getting high school, middle school, and elementary. You know, I was, it was mentioned to me, maybe we should start with elementary, you know, and next time? So we'll, we'll look at that. Anyway, we were just talking about that, but here we go. So these are the intentions of why, and the what, and the how of the department work that we're doing. We wanna make sure that you're seeing what that's all about, making sure that the board is understanding the intentions of our curriculum and what our investments are covering while we're purchasing materials. And usually the timeline starts where, um, I'm receiving them now. Primarily, high school is the ones we typically send a request to study because of the multiple courses at the high school. Some of them may be new, some of them are just to review. And then, um, the departments approve that, and we do also have pilots, um, proposals to study for pilots. Then there's submitting the curriculum, and we bring it, you know, of course, to, for approval here at the board, at the ECI, myself and the department chairs will get the materials they should or envision. Um, there is a process to that. It's very different depending on if it's an exploratory or if it's a core and what materials are available. All right, so basically each department, of course, talks about that particular piece on a slide like this where they say what it is, why do we need to have it, and the how. Typically, it's because it's on the, the cycle for review. There are times, of course, when we have, um, an issue, you know, it's an idea that we really wanna bring forward, and so we're bringing it to you as a pilot. For the high school, we're gonna start with the English department with our CIA leader, Mr. Van Schreier.
Hi, good evening, thank for having us here today. Um, I am really honored, uh, this year to have worked with some really amazing teachers. Uh, we have four courses within the English department ish. Um, uh, two of which are, uh, curriculum reviews, and then two of which are new course proposals that have actually run this year as a pilot, and, uh, we're solidifying the curriculum this year. Uh, so the first one is AP English, and I'm gonna present that one myself because Dr. George, uh, underwent some medical procedures today, and so she's unable to make it here. Uh, but I did work closely with her on this curriculum review. She worked really hard on, um, trying to bring in some new books, uh, and, uh, in the spirit of offering more choice to students in at least a couple of the units that she teaches in AP English. Uh, great teacher, she's always got this desire to grow and learn, despite the fact that she has done an outstanding job in AP for years and years and years. And I would put her AP test scores up against anybody in the state. Uh, but, uh, she's, she had this great idea to develop a, a new unit, kind of like a companion text unit, uh, which compares some of the classic literature, uh, that we teach with some modern novels. Uh, and that kind of work as companions to the classics and, and, and have the students have some discussion around that. So that's primarily, uh, mostly what she added to the curriculum map that already exists for that class. So she refreshed the map, uh, researched some new text options, and is looking to purchase some novels uh, for that particular unit. Um, the second class is World Literature and Humanities. This is a curriculum review that was done by, uh, Mr. Brian Van De Venter and Mrs. Alana Britlinger. And, uh, Mr. Van De Venter is here today to talk about that.
This was the periodic review of the curriculum for World Lit. And, um, as such, one of the problems we often have with World Lit is that sophomores take American Lit and juniors take Brit Lit, and then World Lit is the entire world. Uh, one, so one of the things we found that would have been helpful is a broader scope of literature. So we kind of examined the existing book club units that existed in the sophomore class and the junior class, and we created a similar unit, uh, to offer more student choice in terms of reading, uh, but also give students a broader range of literature from around the world to sample from and a lot more, uh, options there, and hopefully replacing some of the texts with some new texts.
Thank you. Uh, the next course is Interactive Reading and Writing. Uh, this was a course that was, uh, sort of dreamed up by Mr. Dreske and his team. And, um, he brought Mrs. Jankly in, uh, had to do it, run it this year as a pilot. Um, and, uh, I've had the opportunity to, uh, observe her a few times throughout the, the year in this course. And she is amazing, and she's made such a great difference, uh, in the lives of these kids, uh, and of course, in their reading performance as well. Um, and so it's been a great success, and so we've decided to solidify that this year and actually get the curriculum board approved so we can continue to run it, and also to, um, offer an option to offer some English credit for students who do take the course. So I'll have Mrs. Jankly come up and talk a little bit more about that class.
Well, first of all, I'm glad that you mentioned Mr. Dreske. I know he's back there, and he was, uh, we talked a lot about this. And, um, over the summer, we got it going. Um, I did a lot of preparation for this class, was very excited. Uh, this class focuses on students who are at risk. Um, the students that we focused on were, um, their reading level was, um, under third grade. Most of them were closer to second grade, uh, reading level. Uh, when we talked to these students, they said that they definitely wanted, um, they themselves wanted to be better readers and writers, uh, so that, there was a lot of eye in. Uh, I was very excited about that. Um, it's very interactive, I mean, that's in the title, I know, but, uh, we do a lot of story mapping. Uh, we do a lot of, uh, strategies that are before strategies, we're, we even get going. Um, and I think that a lot of the strategies during reading have helped students to realize that, um, active readers, you're constantly going back into the text, you're not just reading it and then you're done. Um, and then at the end. Um, and then at the end, uh, we do a lot of re, you know, reacting and reflecting either through summaries or, um, within the work of the class. Um, it's also, this class has become a second family. Um, the students are extremely comfortable within the class. Um, and, um, it's a lot of fun. Uh, the successes, I just wanna mention a few successes. Um, their grading levels have improved, uh, at least by one to two grades depending on the student. Um, there's greater engagement in reading. Um, they are reading novels now, uh, which I think is great. And there's a lot of buy-in. Uh, so when semester one ended, they came in and I said, you know, do you guys wanna take semester two? You know, I, you know, and they're like, yes, we do. So I, I kept all of my students. I was very excited about that. And, um, the, the strategies that were taught transferred into other classrooms. So it wasn't just what happened in my current state in my classroom. And I had, um, Peggy Slater come to me, another high school, uh, teacher, exceptional teacher, and she came to me and she, you know, showed me some of the students' work that was completed in that class. And, um, made me very happy, of course. So, um, very excited about this class and looking to teach in it in the future, so.
Mr. Schneider, there's no cost to this particular items that because you like the test, the text is already, is that?
Uh, there was, there was a cost. It was a nominal cost for, um, a set of, um, high-low reading texts and those have actually already been purchased by, uh, Mrs. Thomas. So that's the reason why I saw the slide. Uh, if I can recall, it was somewhere around four or five hundred dollars.
Four hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, last, uh, as far as, uh, this department is concerned, uh, in a similar fashion, um, uh, Mr. Dresky, uh, had the idea to run a study skills class. We piloted it, um, and Mrs. Collins has been teaching that class. Um, and once again, uh, we have found some successes with that class. And, um, we are looking forward to purchasing some curriculum that's really going to build it and strengthen it in the years to come. So Mrs. Collins has, has great ideas to, um, strengthen the course. So we decided to write a full curriculum for it and bring it before the board once again. And, uh, I'll let Mrs. Collins talk a little bit more about that class.
Thank you. So, um, as Mr. Schneider said, this, this is the second year I've piloted this class. Um, we have seen some significant successes with students with improvement in their grades and we decreased in the number of overall, um, missing assignments for, for students. Um, we have seen students that just didn't know how to study. How do I write a note card? How do I, um, you know, when do I write a note card? How do I ask a teacher if I can do, um, test corrections to write an, an email or, you know, how do I, um, how do I ask for my accommodations? And those are the, some of the things that I've been working with them on over the last two years. Um, but for this class, we have, for our students with IDPs, they have transition goals for post-secondary and we don't have a curriculum for that right now. Um, so one of the things is we'd like to purchase something called the Next Up Transition Curriculum. I attended a conference back in March, um, for, it's called the Michigan Transition Services Association, um, for helping our students that, you know, transition from high school to life after high school. Um, so we, this would be the curriculum that we would purchase. And then it would also help our students so they could self-advocate for accommodations and ways, you know, um, they can ask for their employers so they can be successful contributing members of society after they graduate. Um, this would be for students with IDPs. We would have two different sections we would run. One would be for our ninth and tenth grade students who would focus more on, um, you know, what are your accommodations? What does this accommodation look like? How do you ask for that? Um, how do I study? You know, when do I do this, you know, write note cards? And then, um, the Next Up Curriculum would also, we would have things where we work with them on some basic things like, you know, pre-employment stuff. And then for the eleventh and twelfth grade, we would do more of that study skills book. For them, we would focus more on the post-secondary things like, um, how do you create a resume? Um, what do you do for an interview? What do you do after an interview? Um, and then, um, helping them just to prepare to be like with post-secondary. And just on a personal note, um, I have seen, I, I have chatted with special needs myself, um, and I have seen how much, um, he didn't get the transition services he needed when he was in high school and how much he, it would have benefited him. So I would really like to see, um, this approved and be able to help our students be successful once they move here.
So just, just to clarify one more thing, we do have two separate maps for the study skills curriculum. So, uh, just so you're aware, the ninth, tenth section and eleventh, twelfth sections is technically like two classes. And that's it.
Mr. Schneider, Mrs.?
Yes.
The Next Up Transition Program has a cost of three thousand dollars.
Yes.
Is that a one-time?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Sure.
Mr. Murphy? So when Tammy brought this, she actually brought administration. We met with her and I also included, um, Mrs. Jenny Smith, our special ed coordinator. And so because of the nature of the intent of this supporting transition, which is the responsibility of our pro, our special ed department, we're looking at special ed funding to support that annual cost. It's also our duty to provide students with a transition program.
I guess I'm.
Is annual.
Yeah.
Is annual, the three thousand would be approximately. Again, it sounds like, when I see a round number of three thousand versus the other numbers of the specific.
Yeah, it's because it's a, an actual online type program where students would have access and so forth. It's like, it's like an online.
So they do charge you a flat three thousand.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's like, yeah, it's a, it's broader. So we can have it paid for through the special ed department, but it could be accessible through, even through some of the easy P-type, they do through SOR and, uh, the other programs. So it could impact the entire building.
Very good. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add one more thing, you know, um, Dr. George, Mr. Van De Venter and, um, and Mrs. Jankly and Mrs. Collins did a fantastic job. And part of the thing I'd also like to, to, uh, recognize here is that Mr. Schneider, um, being that he has taken on a coach role, had, you know, a little time, it's been a state coaching people. And part of the work that he did, uh, does is work with teachers on curriculum mapping and identifying standards and really writing curriculum. And has been very instrumental for me, um, at that level, as well as making sure we have success criteria included. So, you know, I, I really appreciate his hard work. All right, we're gonna move on to the math department and this is, uh, kind of a redo. We talked about an elective, uh, pre-apprenticeship type trades math class last year that was gonna be a semester. And after a lot of meetings and looking at it and even connecting with the millworks and Stephen Cool who came to the board, we, um, purchased some of his resources last year, which is some of the classes that you see that from last year. Because we were trying to develop an elective course. Uh, unfortunately, because we were kind of targeting, um, eleven graders, most of those students are not interested because they're at GCI. And so, um, I, myself and, um, Mrs. Peek and Mr. Sostelski, you know, we keep talking about it and come back and we met with administration, the counselors, now our EDP coordinator, Mr. Nagy came with me because he helped me to have it out originally. We met with, um, them and, um, Cory and Brian, our counselors, they really recommended that we rethink it into something as possible as a geometry trades math. It's still under construction. What, um, Cory is doing for me right now is she's working with, and, and Mr. Sostelski is working with, um, Heather. We're gonna have them look at students who might be identified in that career path that would benefit from a class or provide their geometry credit. And there would be, as far as the state's concerned, as long as eighty percent of that content is directly aligned to our own geometry courses, you can add like twenty percent of the trades math embedded and some activities that would be able to be more project-based. We start with more activity level and then build up. So it's a vision. We haven't dropped the ball. We're just really refining the niche and how that would support it. So, um, we'll be able to keep you up to date on where we're at with that as we continue. Hey, Science Department. I need, um, our CIA science leader, uh, Mr. Chris Lannert to come and share some of the work that's been done in this department. Start in the second.
Good evening. Uh, I'm from here. Last September, I, uh, we even asked about eighteen biology courses in change. And I did that hearing, but I started looking at this, uh, curriculum. What could that realign it? At this time, is that up for any type of, um, monetary adoption? It's just a realigning to what the AP College Board want for next year. So success is due not to nineteen, but they did this, that, uh, they touched it and made some improvements in my opinion. And of course, it's time to have military, so, uh, it's, 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 uh, moving. Next one we're looking at is biology. Last year, one of our new hires, Meredith, our, um, stat development her and Kristen Miller, myself, and got around organs and processes and probably even created a miracle in my school. Stat development together and a, a large, um, list of items that they thought they needed to update the curriculum and make them more relevant to the students today. Up there you can see, uh, looking at fourteen thousand and fifty, uh, including microscopes. They're gonna have to take, uh, the microscopes that we had. They probably moved their own high school. They've, uh, you needed your own flashlight and mirrors, made some of these work. So they're in there, repair and replacement. Um, a lot of, a lot of other, uh, hardware and technological stuff that, uh, I, I haven't used. Some of the stuff in the AP bio curriculum for a number of years, we don't wanna have, there's some items.
Is that all basically equipment or is there some text in what we're doing?
For us, all equipment.
For the fourteen-nine?
Oh, yeah.
All equipment? Okay. One-time thing then?
One-time thing for six years. And then, uh, more metro science, uh, Mr. Cox, he did this. Uh, he looked at it and updated the curriculum app. But it really isn't any type of, uh, standards, a lot of, you know, there, but he found some, um, just some biological, uh, looking at it. Um, no cost really, uh, I mean, I didn't get to put out there, you didn't get to purchase, purchase orientary materials. That's gonna be about two hundred dollars, uh, you go to purchase order and, uh, so does this Thomas here purchase order for this. It's been good for us, these kids outside and just kind of try to make them more relevant for what they're interested in the last few years.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Bussler. He's our social studies CIA leader. Here to present.
Um, this is actually very similar to, um, Mr. Van De Venter's AP, um, biology. It's just a, kind of a re-unpacking of, uh, the standards, the learning objectives through college board. Um, one thing I did mention there, um, no money needed, but it was very vital to me getting this actually done was running Core Camp and some of the professional development we've done during the school year. That was getting this done, spending the hours to get it taken care of is really difficult to do after outside of school hours. But having curriculum camp and the things that this time has set up for us is, is vital to get this work done. So I wanted to mention that. And like I said, this was just a re-unpacking interview I've ever come out.
Okay, World Languages. We had two courses that were reviewed. Sonia, CIA leader, was unable to come tonight, but I work really close to Sonia and with Brenda Love. So we had French III, um, and the reason why they were here is because they were picked up for review. So it's the, basically polishing it up, reviewing it, looking at it, updating it. And, um, really appreciated, uh, Sonia's leadership in making sure that there's success criteria in both of the maps for, um, French III and Spanish II. And, um, also, Mr. Schneider's been helping with some of that work through his coaching role. So both courses are up to date. They're gonna do some more work on assessment, but the actual curriculum is, is set to go. So, um, basically just for this collaboration, looking at scope and sequences and making sure their targets and learning targets and their success criteria are clear. Okay, Mary Mary is here for our health, um, PE class that's being, um, reviewed. It's something that was a strength and conditioning and you might have heard about it. And so they updated that and I'm gonna have you share because you live it.
Yes, I do. Uh, good evening. So I started here last April, um, so I'm coming up on my one year of teaching. And when I first started, I was like, what in the world is this class? Um, it is not your traditional strength and conditioning or weightlifting class. It's, it's, it's definitely more than that. It's a special thing we have going on. Um, so we are proposing, we got the curriculum together, we're running it and it is awesome. Um, it obviously combines a high-level athletic training program along with speed development and we also included a leadership. Um, students are obviously challenged every single day in order to grow. And, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's really fun. Um, you'll ever see us at the multi-purpose building on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Feel free to stop by and watch. Uh, there's, there, uh, the energy is unbelievable. So, um, other than that, there's no money at this time that's needed and, uh, it's not something that I've gone on, so that's it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for getting that map created. It is, it's something that, um, I know the high school works hard at. It's like when they're doing pilots, they wanna make sure they have an actual amazing curriculum, right? Make sure that we have that published. So I really appreciate the work that it takes to do all of that. We have quite a slew of courses from our applied arts and video production. So, um, Mrs. St. Clair and Mr. Bennett will be coming up to go through those courses.
All right, I'm gonna speak on behalf of, uh, Mrs. Parkin. Uh, she's been working really hard this year. She, I think she's been a wonderful addition to our high school program, uh, developing the, the Eagles Nest. Um, really getting business into the mindset of our students. Um, and I, uh, was able to briefly talk about this, um, here. Uh, but, you know, one of the things she's interested in is giving the students an introduction to, to business. What is business? Why is it relevant? Um, why is it important? And kind of giving them that introduction course. So that's what this is. Uh, she's looking to provide, uh, some additional opportunities for students to explore the, these course opportunities within the CTE program. Uh, she wants to equip them, uh, with the real-world applications, some of the things that, I mean, if you haven't had the opportunity to see her classroom, many of the things that she's done is very much focused on that. I know I had the opportunity to do a, um, what was it? They called it a, uh, goes out like a, a marketing pitch, uh, competition that they had. And, uh, she sent it to a s- small group of us and we got to go through the student pitches, um, and evaluate them. And the winners got a fifty-dollar gift card and, and it was, it was a great opportunity for those students. Um, so I know that those are the types of things she's bringing, um, of value to our students. So she's gonna be doing that. She's looking to create a, uh, add the, uh, principles of business, the digital curriculum through, I don't know if I even said that correctly? Sendage, uh, forty dollars per student, uh, and she's hoping to pay for that all with grant funds.
I'm here for video productions. I'll be here next year for our, our classes also. Um, all of our equipment is through the backboard. So we have no monetary, uh, purchase that we need to make, but we did just purchase seventy thousand dollars worth of computers through the backboard. So that is a huge investment, but they'll last for several years at this point in time. They do a great job of supporting us. Like Russ sits on the board, uh, attends the meetings and helps us get the equipment that we need so that we can stay up to date with what's going on in the industry. Most of, uh, what I did was just realign the map, add it in the success criteria, the formative and some, some of the assessment. And then, um, just changed some of the wording where it was specific to a type of editing software so that we can make changes as the industry changes with their software. So instead of sticking with Final Cut Pro, it will say video editing software. Um, we're actually using Adobe Premiere at this time. But that allows us to change our software through whatever everyone else is using. But it's pretty much consistent with each of the maps. All a little more about the same. Um, announcements, we started adding in podcasts a couple of years ago and we're continuing that, so we add that into the map.
All right, I should be able to go through these ones pretty quick. Uh, you'll notice that some of them are combined together. So this is vocal music nine twelve. This is going to be your concert choir, your chamber ensemble. If there's ever get to the point where we re- rebuild that back up and we can add in some of the additional courses that may have existed in the past, they would all fall, uh, fall underneath this. Uh, one of the things that I really worked hard on is to make sure that both band and choir not only aligns to the state standards, but they also align to the state, uh, music organization. So the MSVMA, which is the Michigan School Vocal Music Association, and when we get the band, it'll be the Michigan School Band Orchestra Association. Uh, they dictate the level of evaluation for the type of performance group that you have based on school population, uh, just like athletics, uh, essentially. So, uh, So, uh, like when I take our band, band festival, our high school fits under the MSBOA, uh, class B. Um, and then our second band, because when you have a second band, you would have two classifications. So our second band, uh, would follow our MSBOA classification, D, high school of D. And our middle school will actually follow that exact same structure. Um, so you'll notice that many of the things are aligned there and of course I added in our success criteria, uh, and things such as that. Uh, also looking at a lot of the, uh, resources and just trying to, you know, build utility to our programs. Uh, so you'll see in here that we have this request for twenty wireless, uh, microphones and receivers. Uh, one of the things that I think is really important to know with this is this is not something that will just be able to be utilized by the choir program and the music program. But this is something that we could be using for follies, for Shakespearean performance, for beginning theater. Uh, these are things that if we had a person coming in with a presentation, they could have a belt pack on, it's an over the ear thing and it's ready to go. Uh, so this is something that I think has a huge, uh, utility to our, our school, um, and it would be wonderful. Uh, band, you'll see basically the same thing that I just discussed. Uh, and here we're looking to add some additional method books. Uh, we've been using Sound Innovations at the high school level. Uh, it's one of the leading, uh, music, uh, resource books. Uh, it's kind of the equivalent of when you join middle school band in sixth grade and you got that little beginner, uh, book, the Exponent Achievement or Standards of Excellence or whatever program they use. Uh, this is the high school equivalent of that, so it just allows us to dig into some of these materials, uh, a little bit higher. Uh, we're requesting some additional ones to round out our room ensemble one and then a full set of ones for our lower band to use to replace some of the older materials that we've done. Uh, along with tuners and contact points that, uh, allow our students to continue to, um, perform some of the actions that they're getting evaluated on under the standards. And then the resource of replacing some of our music stands that just have not withstood this, and, uh, the, the test of time. So that's the number down there. And then, well, is marching band on here, marching is not on here, but, uh, you'll see the curriculum map in the, in the thing. Uh, the only thing I'll note for marching band, uh, there's no cost for that one, but the only thing I'd hope for that one is that on top of the state standards, you'll also see alignment to national standards. So NAVMA actually has a national standard, uh, for marching band. Uh, so we align the curriculum around those concepts and I think that's a good direction to go. And I think most of the, um, top competitive programs in the nation are really aligning to those as well. Uh, and then music appreciation, so this is a, uh, an exploratory class, uh, similar to an exploratory art uh, or introduction, uh, to video production and such. Uh, our students, we don't do the traditional approach to music appreciation where it's all music history. Um, we do an aspect of that, we'll go through different music type grades, different music genres, but we also go through, uh, and you'll see it in the curriculum if you wanna take a look at it, but we'll talk about music as in terms of, uh, commercialism and in terms of technologies, in terms of personal identity. Um, and so they get an opportunity to explore these different concepts of music, um, and projects. And so our thing's project-based, um, and they build a portfolio throughout the system. One of the programs that we use is a program called Soundtrap. It's an all online program, it's similar to GarageBand or Audacity if you use either of those. It's very simple, it's got a very simple interface to it. Also allows for things like podcasting and, and other things like that, you can plug. Um, they have mobile apps, you can do it online, uh, but you can plug in a live instrument to it. Uh, similar to using like a guitar, guitar pedal, you can plug, uh, mic, a USB microphone into it and play an instrument or plug in a guitar and use all the different amps and sound effects that you could ever want, uh, through that program. They got a giant library of loops and stuff. Uh, the students really get to explore making music and, uh, you know, editing things, uh, using this program. Costs about three ninety-nine, uh, per year for, uh, fifty seats. And we've been using that for the last two years to some pretty massive success.
Okay, we, uh, Sean Nester is a CIA V for, um, middle school. We only have a couple of courses and Mr. Ravenol is coming for the course that he wrote, so we will move on. One of the courses is, first we come, she was here last year, she revamped computer science for sixth and seventh grade. And then this past year, she revamped the media productions course that she teaches. And she also has been collaborating with Sheeran St. Clair, who's helped a ton with that back consortium with getting us the needed materials that, um, this, there's no cost to update what we've had to do for this course, so that's exciting. And Kristen's really taken this new role of hers, um, and taking it to the next level. She's worked pretty hard at trying to create some great experiences for the kids, daring and bold, including this video of the media productions class, which kind of is a feature to video productions at the high school. Okay, um, and the next is bands, and so Mr. Ravenol is here to talk about.
Oh, I'm talking in three hours. Um, my name is Mr. Ravenol, I teach band in middle school. I was actually here the last time I did curriculum in the middle schools, which was fantastic. I found, first time around, I was just kind of trying to take what I had and rewrite it and trying to, in a way that applies to how I like to teach. Um, and so this time around, I really got to take a little, dig a little deeper into it. Um, I use the essential almost two thousand book in sixth grade. And that's really starts with a strong basis for everything we do from six all the way through high school is what we started. Um, so I spent a lot of time really focusing on that. I put a lot of links in there to free websites that I use as practice for students to use, note identification and things of that nature. Um, and then seventh and eighth grade, I'm looking to do, um, new stuff. So I'm also looking to move to the same, there are multiple levels of sound innovation books that Mr. Bennett was speaking about. Um, for seventh grade and for eighth grade. So it'd be a nice gap to bridge between, uh, middle school and the high school. Um, we also have, um, uh, um, our music stands we currently have in the building are as old as the middle school is. So they have been in less than great repair, um, but as part of this, we're open to get some new music stands, tuners to attach to the, the music stands as well, so they're not being dropped constantly. And that the kids can start to learn the fundamentals of playing the tone advantage. Oh, yes. Yes, um, choir as it stands right now at the middle school is being taught as a nine week course. Um, so a very brief amount of time. Um, currently they have, some of these kids haven't had music since they were in fifth grade, um, because we don't have a full-time choir teacher. Um, so it'd be amazing. But, um, at this point, so Mr. Bennett and I are targeting them, um, and working on, starting from, uh, simple things like singing in single unison as well as singing in, uh, two to three-part harmony at times, um, trying to help get more students involved at the high school.
Thank you. Okay, now the next is elementary, so, um, we're gonna start with the phonics curriculum that we are, um, proposing. So basically, uh, just a little bit of praying through the dyslexia, uh, task force and account that I'm participating in and as far as our grants that we've been bringing with the thirty-five J. We've done a lot of work on, um, strengthening our teachers' background and understanding in language comprehension and phonics instruction, including the Oregon Youngham training that I've, I've shared with you over the last year and a half, for almost two years now. Uh, with that, we, um, recognized a gap with our resources to teach the specific phonics instruction. And so we have, um, we wanna make sure that it's cohesive, that it's multisensory, that it follows the basics of a quality tool. And so our teachers, um, met on the last PD day after looking at what we have with our, our pathology with the phonics program, what we have with the Oregon Youngham training, which is a great methods training, and the curriculum sequences as well as the UFLI, which we piloted this past year. And the consensus was to move forward with UFLI. And so that will be something that will be very great because our K three teachers will all have, um, a systematic instruction for phonics that everybody follows, so we're pre-catchen about that. The majority of the class were covered, um, through the, sort of fund, the grant for just the books. So it's a, it's a low proof. The other pieces like the magnetic letters and things that we, we bought for the Oregon Youngham training and, um, through the thirty-five J grant. So there is minimal to no cost, yes.
Mr. Thomas, you mentioned the consensus of the team believes moving forward that the UFLI is the proper thing. What does that mean, are we talking a high percentage of the staff?
It was a very high percentage, yes. Every single day.
Ninety percentage?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I, my literacy coaches and principals were there helping to facilitate that. And the one thing that we have to remember are we're asking for the sequence and the order so that everybody follows it so that if you're in one kindergarten class, every kindergarten teacher's teaching the same sequence. So that way intervention needs to come in, they know where to pick up where they are because, you know, as, as things happen, like back in the day, people would have their own spelling program, so then it wasn't, there wasn't consistency. We need everybody to be on the same page. Teachers who have strength and methodology, they'll be able to use their own approaches. And so there's some of that, um, freedom that, you know, that they'll be able to do. And we purchased the materials they really like, and so it's really the sequence that we're adopting here.
The structure will keep people on pace.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And then the, the, the exciting one here, this is kind of a big deal, just so you guys know. Uh, I'm having my folks come up here. So I'll give a little background as I'm ready to jump in, but we started looking for social studies materials for the K five, um, last year. And literally, I think it was a jam, they went to the social studies K five, um, ISD meetings. We were trying to find any source out there that's a good core to use for K five. We exhausted everything we could find. They, because what we thought we would do is instead of starting, you know, beginning of September, trying to find a tool or a resource to pilot, we would do the research prior to the school year of the pilot, right, of the review year. Uh, unfortunately, we had a very difficult time and even in the last hour, we had one that came in that was a pretty good strong geographic, geography resource, but just didn't hit all the standards for K five. Um, so we decided to take a different route and I'm gonna have, um, Michelle start with kind of the route that we're taking.
Hi, I'm Michelle Perkins, thank you very much. Um, our for social studies for the four five at Central, um, we have focused on the core democratic values. So what we designed and we were, I went to a, um, GISD for meetings, when, and Pam was there with me. So we designed each grade level to take two core democratic values plus review the ones prior to before. And by doing that, the kids are gonna be exposed to the core democratic values K three five. And in fifth grade, we just review them all. And I tried to incorporate that into our writing, which we also have been doing on by integrating our content areas such as writing. And one of the writing pieces that we did for research was researching the explorers. And they all took all the time to cite, uh, state standards. We're thinking about changing that to talking about the people that were prior, that were working, um, during the rest of American Revolution, like Phyllis Wheatley and going out and seeing the importance, the kids, the kids from research, the importance of the people that affected what we have today. Um, the fourth grade teachers just finished a project-based learning activity with their kids. They did video society, which focuses on the economics, which is part of the fourth grade curriculum. And Amanda McHulch and I are working on designing a PBL lesson right now for the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And we'll be putting that into effect next week.
So basically what we're doing is each of our reps, we got two reps per grade, looking at the standards and they're deciding on what the units are gonna be, so it's like teacher-created materials, right? That they're developing, right, and that they get consensus on with their, their teams. And then they're looking at like making sure, so the unit maps right now are step one. You have access to the maps that they've created. We're still finishing up the second grade, we'll get that there, but we're not done yet. So the units are created, we got the ideas, we've aligned the vocabulary, we've worked on the standards, right?
We've created assessments that will be used by every person that teaches the social studies, so there's consistency, consistency with all of the students.
And we'll be moving on next year to work more on the templates, but, um, Pam's gonna share a little bit about, uh, how we're trying to find some actual resources now aligned to those units that we're developing.
Good evening, I'm Hannah Nicole, I teach third grade at Hyatt. Um, I was fortunate enough to get to work with the second and third grade teachers and we get to, second grade teaches communities, third grade gets the state of Michigan. So it's very relatable to the kids and they're excited to learn this material. As a matter of fact, our second grade at Hyatt just yesterday kicked off Box City. And they had, I guess there was kind of eight to ten community members that were in the library talking to the kids about the community. They build an entire community out of boxes and then they have the whole ribbon cutting and it's a great project-based learning for our second graders. And third grade, like I said, we get to talk about the state of Michigan, we study the entire state, so the kids love to tell their stories. At, end of the year, we visit the Capitol, um, and Lansing and the Michigan Historic Museum and that's always a huge field trip, they love doing that. Um, in addition, there are several virtual field trips that we've had, the opportunity, my classes had the opportunity to experience this year. We did one, um, early in the year when we were doing the geography of Michigan, the Sleeping Bear Dunes. And some kids have been there, some have never been there, and when you're talking about it, of course, they have no idea what you're talking about. But to be able to have a virtual field trip. We also did Fort Michlem-Mackinac when we did our history and that was a fabulous virtual field trip. Um, now the kids, they think they wanna go on a field trip there, I said, no, we're not doing that, maybe fourth grade.
Fourth grade is going to Mackinac this year.
Going back.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, but what I wanted to talk to you mainly about was the discovery education that we are piloting. Um, it was, what was it called before?
Discovery Head, but now it's a discovery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, whatever. Um, but it is a great program to be able to bring more experiences to the kids. Um, some, I know some that I have done with my class because in elementary, we're teaching every subject and so much of the time, especially K two is spent on ELA and math. By the time they get to third grade, the science and social studies standards just explode and they keep on going after that. So I found one in science, we're working on weather and climate and trying to move these Iranian tanks to a new island, what island would they be good at? I found a video about releasing an Iranian tank into the wild. And the kids loved it, but they also are convinced those are the Iranians that we're talking about in science. We're not, but let them believe it. And then I also found one, um, we talked about the growth of Michigan and mining. And, um, there was one, it was really cool, I wish I could have let the kids do it, but it's just for the teachers to pilot, where you actually had to drive the dump truck and load the copper and iron into your dump truck and get it somewhere. I'm not a video person, so of course I tipped my truck over and the kids felt that was hilarious, but it, it is just a great experience for the kids to be able to feel like they are there and that's what we're trying to create in social studies.
Thank you. So just to kind of sum it up, so we're looking at project-based, place-based, you know, experiences, so there's field trips involved, assemblies, so it's all project-based what we're looking at for social studies. Uh, the MC three is open, I shouldn't say, open, there's open resources for us. The only cost may be the, the streaming with Discovery Head that we have at the six twelve level, we're looking at K five.
Uh, Mr. Nicole, this made me a question for you and I apologize here. With, in third grade, that's with Michigan history, what I remember, um, there's a lot of, with, with the, the lumbering that we did in Michigan, that has a significant impact. I mean, is that something that's still with this process that you guys are doing, the lumbering, the impact? You know, I know you've had lumbering days in the past, will that continue?
Yes.
Okay.
There's another jack. Okay, I wanna go back strong, is that what you're doing there? Thank you very much.
Okay, so thank you so much, we just wanted social studies for elementary level to be teacher-driven. Um, if we give them one more textbook, that's just not gonna make them excited. So teachers can develop these units, K one worked really well. We had Mrs. Mowini and Mrs. Denton working for kindergarten and we had, um, Mrs. McCloud Clark and Mrs. Mowini at, at UML. So we had, and for first grade too, first grade, so we have a lot of teacher-driven activities that will be low cost. So that is it, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thanks so much.
They don't.
Mr. Murphy, wanna kick us off?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mrs.
Nice for this presentation, um, I guess the final slide says it all. Thank you to you and all your designers that work on adjusting these curriculums. They really seem to be focused on bringing it to real life skills in a lot of cases. I love the geometry math, uh, trade math one, I think that's, I think there's just gonna be so many more opportunities for students to go into the trades in the future. I think it's been largely ignored for many years. I think it's been largely ignored for many years. And with A I coming on board, I just see less opportunities for, I used to say, going to a college-based education if they're not in certain areas. Because paper pushers will be eliminated largely by A I activities. So I think it's ready for students, another interest, it's solid in, in those kind of real-world experiences, whether it be the business classes or the, the trade math, I thought that was really, really good. One thing that kind of catches my eye is, not just this year, but all the years, we might add some classes, add some classes to high school level especially. Are we able to offer them frequently enough? Is this a schedule, like get it one year and after next year? And everybody sees that coming?
I've been working with him and his team. What they're talking about is alternating like an A V system. And Mr. Dresky can speak more to that. But just to make sure that we have, you know, the cores are of course, you know, we get that ten before, but they also need it for our experience system. So he's working with his department chairs on, on doing an alternate schedule.
So it's working out. It's, I mean, the other thing that concerns me right now, obviously, is our class size is continuing to get smaller and smaller. I assume as far as the grades, you know, I think.
Well, it says that next year it won't because the kids coming in are higher. They're a larger group than the one holding, but. And there's some things that we have to do, like we have to operate the computer science. Because for example, my assistant, Michelle, and we're talking about the law that's going to require that. Well, we're ahead of that, we already have an A P computer science class at high school. So, you know, some things, they're going to be required. And so there won't be an adjustment of saying, well, you can alternate that because you really can't. But I mean, there's more to it. And, and the experts are the high school folks, I'm trying to make sure, I'm trying to be ahead of it too. But, but they're doing a great job.
Well, I'm just hopeful that we can continue to offer them in a, in a schedule that's realistic for the masks, for the students to be able to take the classes that they would want to take over a four-year period. I just hope that it's well-designed so that people can see it coming down the road. I need a plan on taking that course junior year.
I think you do a big job sharing, you know, with the kids what the courses are. I do surveys and, and do different things like your sore times or sharing the announcements, broadcast what's available. I mean, there's lots of different ways that they're communicating to the student body.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I saw a good thing.
Um, it's kind of just like answering a little bit from like students' perspective. I will definitely say that they do very well, like telling us about the courses and allowing us to be able to ask any questions, even if it's like equal time. Most teachers can answer any other questions about the courses for us, but they never fail to let us even go down to the counselor and ask them about it. And they also make it super easy to sign up for the classes and kind of change your schedule. Because like sometimes, I mean, I know that you're like, like as in last year, I got to choose my classes for this year and kind of be able to set it up. But then also like with A P history, you're for the like, well, are you willing to take this? And then after that, this might be the next step after that. So they definitely communicate with us about it and give us all the information that we need on it.
Again, I'm just amazed, because back in the day, we did the old cards. Where you guys, they wouldn't have, it's amazing, we traded cards for like, I want this class this time. I got this class at that hour and that hour. It's like, it worked, but it took a little hard training.
Good, thank you.
This was my first time actually being in front of a presentation. Usually I was watching, I was watching it from, I mean, in the audience. So I kind of wanted to ask a question about this. So I know the curriculum, when did you guys do the update? Was this like the end of twenty twenty-four, middle of twenty twenty-four, when we were picking out curriculum and new materials?
It typically is during the year. But if you're going to pilot, like the only course that was really going to pilot would have been social studies. And I knew that, and at the elementary level, it's a big ticket. When you look at McGraw-Hill or some of the big publishers, it's buck thousands, right? And so we, if we're going to do that, I didn't want to have it only be a semester. I wanted there to be an opportunity to do maybe a fall semester and a winter semester with, you know, different resources. But after we exhausted like seven programs, and then some of them were open, education-type programs too. That's when we decided to opt to do more of a project-based, place-based educational experience for social studies. But typically, you know, some of our courses, like an A P class, I think you typically have to have a certain textbook. That's what's required. So it just really depends on the course, but usually that's kind of a prescription and it's not a ton of choice. If it's a textbook during the course.
Okay, and the other thing is, oh, by the way, thanks for the awesome presentation, Every Educator. It's, this was awesome, it's pretty exciting. I love everything that everyone has, has presented so far. The other thing I was wondering is, all of the curriculum things that you were asking us to approve, are you the head director, so you see everything that they're requesting?
Yeah.
So for instance, I'm not saying that there is going to be a problem, but if there was something like the novels for the A P English class, having newer literature with the classical literature, are you going to be able to make sure that we are following like the new incentive orders or the don't P E I, that are age-appropriate?
And my department chair makes sure that as well, they, they follow a system and make sure that the books are selected.
Just because every law should be linked to the, the maps too, that were prepared for the board. That's what I was saying, I was thinking, even like with like science or geography, like now that it's Gulf of America versus Gulf of Mexico, like how can we write textbooks for the children? So I was thinking about that too, like as things could possibly change, like do we have to order new things? Or does the, the publisher say?
And D E will let us know on the county, also helps with some of those things. If there's something that we would have to do, I haven't seen that yet.
So like if we bought and say, okay, well, this was only six months ago, we'll go ahead and give you guys a new set of textbooks?
It depends on the publisher, you know.
Okay, that's why I was wondering, usually it's like what, Penguin or Publishing Hall or Rob?
There's big, there's bigger ones like H M S, there's just a lot of different companies. It's kind of like the car industry, you know, there's some big threes or, and then there might be some ancillary ones that are.
I just know it's big money, so if I went to college and paid for books, I can just imagine what we're meaning as a district.
But like, for example, our math department, they're all learning target-driven by the standards and they create their own materials.
Okay, awesome.
You know, it, it's not, I mean, that's just one way, it's a great way. And, and I like what, what our people do. But, you know, there are, in the middle school, we have a reveal, which is a McGraw-Hill tool. And that's, that's something that we've been using, but obviously that's working for our middle school.
Okay, thank you for explaining to me, I hope, I hope you know going forward.
Okay, you can always, you can always talk to me outside of.
Awesome, thank you.
Any others, Mr. Green?
I just want to thank you and your whole team, I really appreciate. This is one of my favorite meetings, and I think in the past, I said it's like Jerry Maguire, where you had me at all. Like everything else is not really needed. You can say, this is what we need, I'd go, okay. It's just proof positive that we're really as a district meeting kids where they're at. I mean, we're really offering a broad base of educational opportunities to the point where if you can't find, I've, I've always maintained, like back in the old days, much different. But if you can't find something that interests you now, with how much we've broadened that umbrella of education, you know, you're not looking hard enough, you know? So I, I just really appreciate that, that education's really a, a, a living, breathing thing and ever-evolving. And I think you guys do a wonderful job.
We are very fortunate in within of the staff that we have.
Yeah.
That are, they're curriculum leaders, they're used to things like camp, curriculum camp. And they like it, I, that was great, you know, I was so happy when I heard that. Sure, we'll just blow those, but you know, that's the whole idea is that the people here, they want, they want a good product. They want their students to have, you know, successful experience. And then when they ask for materials, typically they're pretty conservative.
Thanks for spending money this year.
I didn't spend that much, I usually spend a lot.
No, I like, I, I, you know, every year, I love, I love it.
I just spend some more.
Challenge accepted.
Oh yeah, we have art next year.
Ms. Green?
Okay, I just got a question on the introduction to business class. I know Mrs. Parkin isn't here tonight. But so is this, so it says it's a new C T E, like business course? So do they have one right now?
They don't have an intro.
Okay.
So what we're realizing is that there was one course, I can't remember.
Businessman?
That I think we're not going to look.
Okay.
Okay, because we really feel like we need the intro instead.
Okay, I, because I was.
We deal with sell us maybe on that course.
Well, I was going to say, I completely agree with that. I was personally in the business, or business major class, and I was like super confused, yeah. And I know my peers were as well, that, but like seeing this is awesome, knowing that, you know, yeah.
You know, our peers are reflective and they shift and pivot and they know this is a better option.
Yeah, well, Mr. Crow obviously, I think so, yeah.
Anybody else? Well, I just want to personally thank all of you for all the work that you put into it and for staying here. I mean, I think a lot of the board, I already said it, but the amount of passion that you all have and work that goes into it. So, you know, Mr. Snyder, Mr. Landrum, Mr. Podzik, Ms. Barry, Mr. Bennett, Ms. Sinclair, Mr. Reynold, Ms. Perkins, Ms. Nicole. Also wanted to say, I have a special place in my heart for our X risk youth and our special needs youth. So Ms. Yankley and Ms. Collins, all the work that you're doing and all the feedback that you're getting is just awesome. So I really appreciate it. And the, and the thing that kept going through my head is, you guys were all going through your parts, where wow, we've got the perfect person in every role here. So I'm really, really thankful for that. So, and I'll conclude by saying that this is a discussion item, so we don't necessarily have to consider adoption of the curriculum as presented, but we do have that option as a board if we would like to do that, since everybody is here. So I would entertain a motion to adopt that if anyone would like to do that.
Abundant.
Support.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to accept and adopt the curriculum as presented. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? I opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, great job, that was awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to our next discussion item, which are the parent and student handbook adoptions and updates. I think, I think we're almost done, right? Yeah, almost, okay. Any comments on that?
Uh, sure. Uh, every year, we, we bring any handbook changes to the board for approval. We already have been earlier than we typically have been. Uh, what we have found out over the last couple of years, that we, as we have moved to an electronic enrollment process, uh, we include the handbook in that electronic enrollment process. Uh, and so bringing to you now as a discussion item, um, and then potentially approval allows us uh, to be ahead of the curve to make sure that when we open enrollment, um, we have this information uploaded for parents and students to start reviewing as they go through that process. Uh, so we do have, um, the district K twelve student parent handbook. We go through a process every year, it's on the screen there for you. Uh, we start as soon as school, the school year starts. Uh, principals are, as they go through different things, whether it be policy or handbooks, uh, jot-down items that changes or revisions may need to take place as new policy is updated by the board. That also is, is reflected in this document. And then we meet as a group, which we did about two weeks ago, to go through each and every one of them to find out if it needs to be accepted as a change or not. And as you can see, some may not be accepted, uh, because it may be a school-specific situation. And again, the school can deal with that as a specific entity. Um, so again, I'm asking the board to review this, ask any questions, have any discussion uh, based on any of the potential changes or why something was or was not accepted.
Thanks, Mr. Soski, so this is a discussion item. Is there any discussion that anyone wants to bring up at this time? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. My concern is not with any of the recommendations for changes that have been presented. My, my, my concern is more on it has not been brought up and talked at all, thoroughly enough in my opinion. Since it's an exception, a few years ago, the Lincoln High School exam exemption incentive program, I believe has been not really super productive for the disadvantage that does to certain students. I think one of Mr. Dresky's pull-up points about why he promotes this plan is to benefit all students. And I really don't believe it does that. I don't really believe it actually benefits really any students. Because the ones that are below the seventy-three or eighty-three percent, which is again, eighty-three is a high B minus, seventy-three is the highest E minus. For the couple of different categories in which you can qualify for exempting out of their exams. And again, this is for a nine through twelve, all, all classes, all grades. It just, they're, they're, just did not prove to me enough benefit that by basically this is being done to more or less encourage people to come to school, which is a requirement, it's not exactly an option, you're required to show up for school, that's the law. And be in tardy at class, well, that's something that, you know, you can do or not do. And I think that teachers inside the class have the ability to adjust a person's grade regarding whether or not they want to show up, be in tardy on all times. So I think there's other options other than giving a free pass to basically fifteen percent of students' grade. And that's what their mom's doing for every class throughout the years. Again, uh, talking about what's not really fair to, to all students is you talk about a person who's in the category of qualified for the exemption, whether it's a seventy-three, eighty-three percentile, you, um, you, you can't take the test. And it says, it says, one of the comments says, L H S encourages all students to take their final exams, but they may choose to opt out of their submission. I think you could probably change that to will likely choose to opt out because the percentages of students that are taking advantage of this is very low. It's, it was presented to us as somewhere fifteen to eighteen percent, I think, are the ones that actually take the test. So what concerned me is there, you know, there's all these students that are B minus students or C minus students, just barely above that. And they're not taking these exams. And that to me is troubling, and the fact of the matter is that if they do choose to take the exam, these students, it can only help their exam score, it can only help their grade score, it can't hurt their grade score. So to me, that's very disappointing that all those students that are less than an A would not feel compelled to take that exam, given the fact that they know they can't lower their grade for the class. It's very disappointing. So there's, there's that problem. And then for the students that are not fortunate enough to qualify, because they're not a good student, they're not a good enough student, I should say, to qualify for the exam exemption, they have to take the test. And not only do they have to take the test, but if they do poorly, it will go against the grade. It's just a real contradiction of beliefs and troubles me to the core. I just don't understand why the district would allow this to go on. So the bottom line to me, you know, I think we have other tools that teachers can use to get kids to class, uh, or to behave properly in the class as a form of, of attendance and targets. So I don't think we really need to offer this free pass on these final exams, especially under the criteria that's been used in the past four years since this was done. So the other thing that we look at is we, I got some informal updates today about other districts in the county, what they're doing. And none of them have taken this to the extreme that we have. In fact, very few have done very much at all beyond the senior class year. So again, we seem to be on an island of righteousness here, which I, I'm sure is right. I think it's maybe an island of wrongfulness, more so than righteousness. So the bottom line is, I feel it's time to give this thing up. I think it's time to go back to the good old days of expecting kids to, and parents to make sure that their kids attend school, that they attend on a timely fashion to school. This does not help our middle school students who are out there probably doing the same kind of thing, not coming to school because they don't want to, and not coming to class on time because they don't want to. So why, why are we just looking at these, the high schools as, as an example that needs to be looked at? So again, I like the idea of the fifteen percent being the number that's applied to final exam. I think it's important, when you, when you look at life, you know, your, your employer's not going to say, you know what? You did, you did a really pretty good job this year for your work, you know? Eighty-five percent of your work was really good. And based on that, we ain't going to make you do the other fifteen percent because you just don't have it. That's not the real world, that's not going to happen. You're going to have to go out and do the other fifteen percent in the real world and work. So these people that tell me, well, colleges now are not requiring final exams. A wrong does not, two wrongs, whatever does not make a right. I think that we've got an opportunity here to be a trendsetter. And in my opinion, we go back to more of a traditional approach and be a real, a, a rock star, in my opinion, and, and basically require all of our students at high school to all take the exam and to all be, be tested for their academic career. And all have an account, all scores will count, just like the good old days. And again, being a factor of the good old days, I'm sorry, that's just the way I believe. I believe that, you know, education was, in that respect, was stronger. We do a lot of things. I believe that, uh, you know, education was in that respect was stronger. We do a lot of things these days that are nice, that are better. But I think sometimes we give up some traditional things that are very positive. And uh, so I'm gonna be making a motion at the meeting when we adopt this next time, that we basically eliminate the high school exam exemption incentive program and replace what started with the freshman class next year, the all freshmen. And classes moving forward from that will have to take all their exams through their career. So. I just think it's the best interest of the district. I think it's the best interest of the student. And um, I just don't see a downside to it. I think it promotes the ultimate academic rigor, which I think we're all hopefully supporting. And uh, that's just my thought. And uh, appreciating other people's opinions, but uh, I don't, I didn't, I don't think the amount of growth that we've had in reducing tardies and reducing um, absences to the tune of about three percent is really significant enough to say that we're on the right track. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'll just say real quick before we get some other comments, this is a discussion item and I, I think that there is an opportunity for, for Mr. Sosowski and Mr. Redd, you know, to maybe look at this and possibly bring, bring another, um, some other options based on the discussion for the next meeting, but we'll.
Potentially, yep.
Potentially, yeah. So we'll see on the discussion later, but that's how this could play out. So, Ms. Ranger?
Is this the part where we ask questions before we go down to the next meeting, right?
Yeah, discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, discussion.
So I feel like I didn't over, I did not see this link before we came to look at some of this information. So there's two concerns I have on this handbook change. Uh, the first one is FASPA number twenty seven. I'm just wondering, why are we gonna make it a requirement for the students to all fill out FASPA? Or am I reading it wrong?
Yes, you are reading it wrong. We, we did not apply for that.
Okay, so this doesn't want a grant. So if we ask for the grant, don't we, our school will be bound to be required that every student fill out the FASPA. But if we don't get that grant, we don't have to ask our students and parents to fill out.
We didn't even apply for it.
Okay, that's what I'm making sure. Um, and then the other thing was in the handbook, it doesn't have a number. It just says whole handbook, remove he, she, and replace it with they or the student. Um, I feel that putting that in our handbook, if this is what you're trying to change, you're using a pronoun and that could potentially be violating federal orders where we could lose federal spending because there's only two genders.
We, we, we removed he and she and we did reword it. So it's a the student or student.
So there won't be they, I'm saying the.
Uh, we'd say, you know, depending on the context of the, of the sentence. You know, maybe referring to multiple, they would be referring to multiple.
Could we put it back as he and she then, just to make sure we're clear?
Well, again, we did it with our policies back in. Shoot.
Last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, things are different. Well, now with the new administration.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this would be any violation.
So if, if a parent read this handbook and they thought it was a violation and they turned us into the OCR.
Yep.
And then the OCR said, yeah, you're using pronouns, we're gonna fully, you're federal funding. That's not a concern?
The student or they is not, I would not consider that pronoun.
They is a pronoun.
Okay. Okay. So I mean, yeah, if a parent read that, when, again, depending on the context of the sentence, I don't have all the individuals, he, dash, she, and or they in front of me. But um, depending on the context, I mean, I guess if they wanted to file a complaint with OCR, we would go through that process.
Okay. I, I, I mean, they just leave student or he or she. I just, uh, I don't, I think that's walking a line there.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No, that's why we discussed.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, you can go. I know specifically to Mr. Murphy's point, I think his, his conversation is certainly valid. It, it gives us pause to think through it a little bit more in detail. Um, I think one of the benefits of being on the school board is, is getting point and counterpoints that we can more fully understand where everybody's at, because there are good points. I know historically, when this topic has come up, I did, the only thing that I ever really hung my hat on and drew a line in the sand was the percentage essentially of what we're requiring, as, as you stated, the eighty-three and the seventy-three percent. I know initially when this came about, I think we were at eighty. I still would like to see that tick up if, if the exemption stays, um, whether that be eighty-five, ninety. Um, at what point are we comfortable knowing that the child demonstrates that they understand the course content? Uh, is it only via, is it only via exams? Or is it via, uh, throughout the whole year, the kid should get credit for the entire semester working, or getting ninety percent? Um, so those are all great debates. Those are all open interpretations subjected to each of us. So. It's always one issue that I'm fifty-five, forty-five on for that matter. Um, but at the same token, you know, some of the things that were mentioned as well is colleges really aren't requiring SAT scores. So if there is, there is a movement, somewhat a movement to start to get away from, getting away from exams, if you will. Um, colleges as well. Uh, I mean, we know that, I had somebody share with me that, that their, their freshman child hasn't had any exams at all, um, taking a, taking a very aggressive, very good school. So those are just some thoughts. Um, certainly I'm gonna digest it, take it around with my own head, but I appreciate Mr. Murphy's comments as well as what the intent of the exam exemption is intended to create as well. So I'll be thinking about it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, Ms. Redd?
Um, I was just gonna share too, because you know, as someone who, sorry. But some, as someone who works in education with kids every day, I, I know that there are in some instances where an exam, if they are demonstrating understanding of content through projects and coursework throughout the year, there are instances where the grade is weighted such that it could potentially bring their grade down, but it's not really reflective of do they understand the content. We see a lot of kids with testing anxiety now that really was not as much of a theme years ago. So I know that is a big component of it, especially when we have kids taking high stakes testing, you know, M-SET, P S A T, S A T. You have them doing the N W E A, which is very, even though that's meant for the district and it's a state requirement as well, it's a helpful guide for us on how they're going to perform on those high stakes tests. Those are very long and very time consuming and also very stressful for kids as well in some cases. So I can see the benefit. I understand what you're thinking, but I also, as someone who works with kids every day and in that environment, I also know the benefits of not necessarily requiring it if they are showing that they understand the content. So how do you see that?
Yes, my point is, is that we'll leave it to the teachers to develop a test that they feel is fair for the class. And so fairness comes in and everybody's required to take the test. And so why would they develop a test that only the, the, the students that are struggling are forced to take the test? They might be the ones that have the most anxiety. So just giving them free pass to those that, just because of that factor, I just don't think it's necessary. I think we're just getting a little bit too, too soft in how we can push our students, you know, by not testing. I think that's, you can weight it such that, I mean, obviously there, there's a recommendation that final exams have fifteen percent. And I think that's pretty fair because, uh, you know, should be, could be a cumulative test, could be just a, you know, in the case of an English class, you probably just write a final paper source. So that's not really like a cumulative thing necessarily, although it could be strategies that they learn in class. But um, I just think it's very important that we continue to encourage our students to, to, to depress the limit and not just give them the easy way out.
Who else? Yeah, I just say, my view sense is that I've probably been slightly biased by seeing my own children who, who definitely have been more motivated by the exemptions, uh, in a kind of positive ways. But I think, you know, all of you made good points, Ms. Redd, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Haney. So I think that, um, you know, I'd, I'd be open to like seeing if there's a way to, you know, maybe make it a little more stringent, if still capturing spirit of it. I don't think, I mean, Mr. Murphy has never weavered from uh, his, his stance on this, which I can respect. So, um, but yeah, I guess that's where I'm at for now. So. Okay, uh, that concludes the open part of the meeting. We've gotten. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, and then we do have the athletic handbook. So, Mr. Sosowski?
Um, so again, I, oh.
Sorry, my bad.
So with the athletic handbook, as you can see, very, very minimal changes. Again, uh, gotta get my glasses on. Minimal changes, a lot of tech, what we consider technical changes. Um, so the, it just reads more fluently.
Any discussion? Quick, straightforward? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, uh, we do have a closed session for this evening. Uh, so we will be moving to the closed session to discuss collective bargaining strategy for the section eighty of the Open Meetings Act. Uh, do we have a motion and support? And moving in second. All in favor? I'm sorry.
Before you go there, a quick discussion on this item.
Okay.
I talked to Mr. Sosowski today and continued at this point, he's locked out from discussing any part of a contract negotiation that deals with the teaching staff, because I have a daughter who's a teacher in the district. Um, it is, my opinion, uh, if you look at the law, there is opportunities for board members who have that occasion to be allowed to discuss. Our current handbook does not allow for me to even discuss. I understand not voting, you know, I did way back in the past. Um, but I understand not being able to vote. But the law does not clear that I cannot discuss. And so I just was hoping we could get something done for tonight's meeting, but Ms. Sosowski said the time for it didn't allow. But I, I just wanna make my call about board members, especially the new ones who realize that, you know, basically I'm not allowed to discuss this meeting. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. Okay, come on up, students.